Okay, Alexa calls for Lemons to planning board to order. December 19th, 2022, 6:30. The helm and city hall, EA Car Patrol. Scheduled public hearing and open meeting 6:30.
No, no, I know. I'm waiting to show you. Sorry. Sorry, John.
Continued public meeting for site plan applications for two five nine and two seven three Lancaster Street map four eight four fossils ten dash eleven battery energy storage system. I'll also open up the second hearing. The continued open public hearing for special permit use application of the two five nine two seven three Lancaster Street map forward for fossils ten dash eleven battery energy storage system. Do I have a representative?
My name is James. My name is Brandon Smith, New Leaf Energy. I'll start with giving the board a note day on the project. I'm sure they all remember this is a battery energy storage project on the corner of Margaret Rehab and Lancaster Street at the lasting layout facility. So at the completion of last month's meeting, there are a few outstanding items. I'll kind of go from easiest to the most complicated. First was detail of the bollards that will be surrounding the site or at least on two sides to protect the facility from, you know, any vehicles. That has been included in the plans, the detail of those bollards. Number two was snow storage calculations were requested. We have done those calculations and we provided or added them to the plan. There was one question about the total kind of area percentage area reserve of snow storage. We are actually reserving an area here and here at the end of the access road for that snow storage, which is actually in excess of 20% of the of the access road, which is much greater than 5% that the DPW recommended. So we incorporated those, that item. The third item I wanted to touch on was stormwater. DPW recommended that we have soil test testing done in the vicinity of our filtration basin. We would like to respectfully ask for that to be a condition of approval. Between the timing and the winter, you know, we will be having that geospatial testing done, confirm the calculation from our calculations that were part of the application, but we'd like to have that be a condition of approval. And then the last item from last meeting, which was a review by the fire department. So last week we had a really great meeting with Deputy Chief Quintana and Jen Hoyt from the Department of Fire Services, the station Hartman. Out of that meeting, well, out of that meeting, Lemons or Fire Department and the Department of Fire Services had no comment on the actual site or layout, but there were a few conditions that they requested, which we are amenable to. The board may have seen the email from Chief Quintana detailing those those conditions. Real quickly, two of the kind of near term conditions that he requested is to add to the plans, specifically call out the fire code, Massachusetts fire code and NFBA, I'm sorry, and NFBA eight fifty-five, which is the kind of fire code that the battery storage facility would be needed, it's kind of specific to the battery storage, which we are and will intend to comply, but just wanted that specifically called out in the plans. And then the last thing is a hazard analysis plan, which that's actually going to be a condition of the fire department permit that this project will require prior to construction. And just to remind the boards, this project slated for construction most likely 2024, so prior to that construction, we'll be pulling a fire department permit and that hazard mitigation plan will be part of that. But what he requested that we do within the next 30 days is provide him with basically a draft skeleton kind of document that can be updated and filled out prior to construction.
The hazard mitigation, is that what you thought?
Yes, yep, exactly. Hazard mitigation plan.
It has to be done prior to the build? The approval, it has to be done, the approval for Department of Fire Services, right?
Uh, no, that needs, it needs to be done prior to a fire department permit, which is need of our construction.
Okay.
But for the approval tonight or for the planning board approval, we asked that that be a condition.
A condition, right.
A condition, yeah. And Deputy Chief Quintana was amenable to that being a condition, given that we provided it to him within the next 30.
Can you also tell me about the change in the, it's a wall, not a fence. So can you tell me about the proposed construction of that, what it's going to be and how high it's going to be and what it's going to be made of?
Yep. So that that hasn't changed from our last meeting. So he was just confirming, right, when we were out in the site, he wanted to make sure he understood what it was going to be. It's not going to be a chain link fence or anything like that.
Yep.
It will be a solid wall.
What material, solid wall of concrete?
Solid wall or solid fence?
Wall.
Uh, well, it's, so it's steel columns, right, on concrete foundations. And between those columns will be basically like a vinyl slab filled with mineral wool or sound dampening. So it'd be similar to something you might see on the highway, although not, not sort of similar construction, more aesthetically pleasing as far as material goes.
Do you have the back that up with?
Earth mug?
Uh, no, but.
I'm just curious, you know, the way they listed in their requirements.
So this, we had the visual analysis or visual simulation of the site done. So this is, this is basically the fence to get a kind of a sense for what it would look like, right? These are the steel, steel columns, kind of I beams mounted to concrete footings that you can see here.
With the raised bar now, is that how, like grading the land, the way it's looking there?
This, so it's, there is grading. The facility area itself will be flattened out, which will require a little bit of fill on these, on the edges, right? Because the center of the site is sort of mounted, so the center will come down. But then the, in front of this actually is the storm art basin. So we're looking, they're looking Lancaster, here, sort of this way. Stormwater basin there. So there'll be some grading there that will be surrounding with the proposed landscaping.
And that was what, 10 feet high?
Fourteen.
Fourteen feet?
Yeah.
Good.
Sir, you mentioned bollards. Are these steel beams the ball, are these the bollards or the?
No, the bollards are separate.
Yeah, they'll be separate.
Integrated into the landscaping, into the bushes or whatever.
They'll be behind, yeah. So they'll be, I know it's difficult.
No, that's okay.
But basically fence, bollards right next to the fence, and then landscaping in front of the bollards.
And this fence, the vinyl with the woolen, this isn't fire retardant material or anything like that? This is strictly for aesthetics?
Correct. It's, yes, it's not specifically for, you know, fire.
For sound, sound, aesthetics, height?
Yeah, for 14 feet, they're all.
I think, I think the fire chief's comment about the wall is more about security, right? It's going to be more difficult for them to tamper with the system when it's, you know, kind of a flat, solid wall.
Maybe it'll look like the one behind the wall, not something like that, too. Except, you know, after wall on the bottom of it, I don't know.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, those were the, the main items that have been discussed last, last meeting.
So, and didn't we talk, did we talk, this is going to be the biggest one that's in this whole area?
Yeah, this is, well, this is the, the, there's no, none constructed.
I believe you said that this was the biggest project that you guys have done of this, of this type, right?
We have.
Municipal energy storage system.
Yeah, the ones that are actually in the ground right now are smaller than, than what's proposed here. There are larger ones being proposed throughout the state, right? This is like, this is about 12 megawatt in size. There are 100 megawatts being proposed throughout the state, but actually in the ground that were developed by New Leaf, those are more in the sub five.
So you guys build, as do companies that build salt towers, and then you rent the space out to the, to the customers, the national grid or whoever.
We, New Leaf actually kind of develops everything and then it'll be owned by a long-term owner who will basically lease the, the land from the landowner and, you know, operate.
Yeah, just facilitate the building.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
So I think that's, you know, obviously we'd be happy to answer any other questions the board may have, but feel, feel like we've, you know, have a good plan, especially with Deputy Chief Quintana providing that clear direction, so, you know.
Yeah, I think that was the biggest concern that I had was that the fire department was on base and this is something, you know, new in the city and in the area, so that you had, you know.
In, in any area?
In any area.
This is, so.
Well, yes and no.
This is the highest concentration of stored lithium batteries in a municipality that you're aware of?
That we've developed.
Yeah, they've developed.
This is your biggest, the biggest project you've ever done?
Yeah, just to figure, you know, I'm on my own, I made some phone calls, I did some reading, and I found that there were some others in the state and that Sterling has, has several. And they were like, they put in the first one in 2016.
And are they?
So I, I, I called, they're, they're in a little more isolated areas, okay? And so I did talk to their fire department and see what they, and they've had no issues, no problems and, like I said, the first one they put in was on, was 2016. So they've got some, a little bit of history to go with it, so, but it's also a lot, it's also a lot smaller. And then what they did, they, they chose to do three smaller ones in different locations.
And that's their own municipal power?
Yes, they have their own power plant. Okay. Do you have any else you wish to ask?
Uh, no, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
I'll open it up to your audience or have anyone in the audience wish to make any comment or something. Questions?
Well, I was about to put my two cents in.
I was surprised that you didn't.
I had a question, man, you want to ask me what? Nine thirty-one Elm Street in Lomas, they've been a lifelong resident. Basically, in a nutshell, that property, my wife and I have owned that for about 30 years. And over the years, we've had countless interests, if you will, to purchase the property for this, that, and the other thing. We never liked any of them and we wouldn't sell it for any other reason, but something that was good for the community or cost effective. I can say this from a businessman standpoint of view, it's not going to increase the traffic and you have a facility now that it's the future. We're looking for ways to store energy and produce it other than using fossil fuels. But with that said, the next concern I would have, being a businessman, how are you going to generate any tax revenue off that? Some people aren't aware, you get taxed on the infrastructure, the batteries and so on and so forth, just like a gas station. People feel it's just a little building and you get taxed on the gas pumps and the lights and everything else. So it's a win situation as far as bringing in revenue, no traffic, and it helps the need for more electricity. I'd just like to go on record as being in support of it and that's it.
Can I ask Michael a question?
Sure.
Michael, you know, and I know, I've known you all my life.
Right.
So, and I know how long you've owned the land and everything else, and I know how your interest is in conservation. I know that and appreciate everything you've done in that area. Personally, you know, when this is built out, if it's built out and we approve it, right, approve the special permit, do you see any negatives? I mean, outside of owning it and you being the one that's going to benefit from it.
Right.
You know, it's, it's a real delicate area, you know that. And I, and I like how you prefaced it by saying that, you know, it's something that doesn't create traffic, which it doesn't. Instead, you know, and that's a tough corner to begin with.
Right.
You know, I'm concerned about battery storage naturally because we don't know enough about it because it's all new stuff to us. But I just wanted to know if you had any ill thoughts on this yourself, just being, just be, if you were a neighbor, what would you be thinking?
I would be thinking that I wouldn't want to look at batteries and I think that has been addressed by the fencing and the, by the plantings that are going to go in. I don't know that I would be too put out being that I'm already next to the railroad tracks and there's always trains going in and out of the chemical facility there. So that and then, you know, it's, it's the only other thing that's busy there and sometimes it's like, I can tell you on Saturdays, I cut that field so many times and they've got so many people in there with rock and roll going and the God was, and I'm not trying to play it down, I'm saying noise would be, would, you know, would it bother me? I don't think it would. I, I just don't, honestly. I truly feel that, that today, I really feel that's a perfect fit for that. I can't think of anything else. I mean, the commercial and the Lemons, there is, you know, you're competing with online and so on and so forth. I think it's well done, honestly. That's it, I don't.
Yeah, no, I just wanted your opinion on it, you know, as if you live, you know, because I, I know, you know, and there's going to be some uproar.
Yeah.
We know that because of the technology itself and it's, you know, what's worst case? You know, they said towers could never come down, telecom towers, and then all of a sudden one comes down, it burns down half of a block in the city, you know?
Right.
So I just wanted, you know, your.
Gee, you don't get any answers if you don't ask.
That's right.
Okay, thank you kindly. What do you think? Okay, oh, that's one more time, yes.
I have a concern. There's a life to this technology and there's a life to the batteries. And although this is not a solar issue, in our solar ordinance, we have a performance guarantee to remove the equipment at the end of the project.
Okay.
Now, that can be in a lease with the landowner or perhaps it should be a condition of our approval.
Okay.
This is Aaron Kendrick, I'm the project developer with New Leaf Energy. We do have a decommissioning bond and a lease with the.
Excuse me, just please identify yourself.
Oh, Aaron Kendrick, New Leaf Energy, I'm the project developer.
Okay, yeah.
So, so.
You have a decommissioning plan?
Will the lease hold?
What you, what you like to think?
The lease is done, the land goes back to him and they have to pull the batteries.
The life expectancy, around 20 years, 20 to 25 years.
Before battery technology changes so much.
High level, what are the terms of the decommissioning? They have to, they have to be removed from the site?
Uh huh, yeah, the site would be taken back to what it was, so.
Is that something that we need to have securities on?
Well, that's what I was just trying to think about. That's something we could do that, that in, in 20 years, that, you know, we would have another, you know, another hearing. Or allow for a reevaluation of the, of the product and the site so that, you know, we could, we could make the site plan determinate to a, a time, time, and say at the end of 20 years and then we have to review of the, the status and if there's a decommissioning plan, there would have to be approved by us in the building department.
You don't think you've gone before, it's time 20 years from now, interrupt the meeting?
What's that?
So you don't think your golf leagues are going to change your style, right?
We won't be alive in 20 years, man. If you're on your own, you're 20.
I'm not going to be worried about it. I'd be a hundred.
That's right.
If I may, some towns handle this, just prior to pulling building permit.
Right.
We provide proof of the bond that we, that is in place.
Do some communities have a separate process other than the leasing or the landowner, who you're leasing from to give a performance bond to the city as well?
Um, I think that's, that's a possibility. I think that there can be multiple, like payees on the loan.
Because maybe the city's name should be on.
Well, I mean, another problem, 20 years from now, you may not.
That's right. Yeah, us either.
Well, no, but I mean, the company.
The company, that's correct.
It's left holding the name.
Right. And that's left holding the name.
We run into a lot of that.
Okay, that's the intention of the bond though, is that there's money set aside, that's enough that would be able to cover.
And who estimates the cost of the coverage for the, this man or the?
Yeah, that would be, so us or the applicant for a building permit would need to show, hey, we have this bond in place for X amount of dollars. You know, it's, it's assigned to the landowner and the town would need to make sure, okay, that, that's in place before we're going to give you a building permit in case something happens, that that money would already be set aside and used to.
In, in the city, we have an ordinance in our for site plans, okay? So that we have in, in the ordinance, it says that there's a, we can, it's a passbook account where we would determine that percentage of funds would be a passbook before final acceptance. Okay, a passbook account has to be established to, to complete the project. Now, when we look at that typically of the site plan, they'll come in with homes and they might do base coat, sewage and plumbing on the road, but not do the final coat until all, all the houses are in and the heavy trucks are gone. And then we do, so we might have 40, 50, 60, a hundred thousand dollar bond and then we hold until the end. And, and, but we don't establish that bond until, you know, what we typically do, and I don't think we can do it here, is we typically do is we have a covenant on the property. And we don't, where this is a single property, you can't hold a covenant. But typically, we have a covenant on the property and let's say there's 20 houses in the subdivision, we might release the first 18 in the covenant and then at the end, okay, we hold the bond on the last two. So I think what we might want to do is a condition that, that a condition of approval that a plan be established to, to create a bond, okay? And then up to couple of costs. The other thing that we do is we found that we've been burned a few times, that bonds were established by the banks in the Bahamas. All this to say, banks in the Bahamas don't last too long.
Other Cayman Islands.
Other Cayman Islands and stuff like that. So now we require that there be a local, you know, or a national bank, I forget what the, the actual definition is, but AAA rated or something like that. And there was a specification of where you can put a bond, you just can't put it on a, a bank someplace else and boom, done. I'm just trying to give you some input. We don't have that, we have that in place for a site plan, this comes under a site plan, okay? So, and we, so, but we, we're also, that's a brand new ordinance for us that we just established within the last year. So I would like to, you know, work with you folks, okay? And as a condition of approval, that we develop a bonding structure, you know, prior to final completion and something to that effect.
Yeah, we definitely be amenable to that. For our solar projects, we kind of do it on every project.
Yeah.
It varies a little bit, you know, but, but the, but the kind of general structure of making sure there is that fund available in case if anything goes wrong.
The decommissioning.
It's kind of baked into our assumptions, so we'd be happy to have that condition.
And that's just, you know, we'll make that as a condition and that's something we can work towards. And then you can come back to us with a, a proposal on what the bond and then I'll give it to the city solicitor, I guess, and he can look at it and make a determination or the city treasurer or who the right person would be. But, you know, someplace in the city that, that would take a look at it and financially understand what's happening and get approval.
Yeah, make sure.
So that would be another condition of approval, that a bond be established prior to commissioning.
Yeah, that, that sounds like a good plan to us.
And, and the, the major electric companies and the carriers are all buying into all the battery storage stuff?
As far as the utilities, yes, yes. As part of this project, we've already started that process to submit an application to the house.
Because I know they put a hold on a lot of the solar that was going on. I'm sure you guys were affected by this as well.
Yes.
The federal government put a hold on a lot of the stuff that was approved already because they weren't being put back into the grid or they weren't being purchased by the carriers. So.
Yeah.
I know it's different than creating.
Right, yeah. But there are still, that's still that process that we, we've already engaged, the utility submitted an application for interconnection at that specific location.
And they were all good with it? They, they have given you an approval on their side? Not yet.
Yeah, that, that process is pretty lengthy, so it kind of runs in parallel to getting zoning permits, but we anticipate having that back.
Yeah, we, so we're in the study process with them right now. So we've gotten their preliminary assessment that we can put the battery here and tie it into that feeder.
So they give you the go ahead to put the money into developing the plan because they, they're saying we're going to be complying, we're going to buy it?
Yeah, so, I mean, they, they would purchase the, the power national grid.
For real?
Yeah, and they also need to, as part of the Massachusetts Clean Peak Program, they have to purchase Clean Peak credits, which are supplied by the batteries. So it, it fulfills multiple requirements for them. But the next step, basically in the process, we're finishing up the utility study at the beginning of next year and then they do a transmission level study to make sure there's no transmission.
Right.
Issues and then after that, they, they give the final go ahead. So, yeah, there's a lot of kind of study and analysis that goes into make sure that nothing goes here that's going to cause issues.
Because if they take that and you're going to have customers, then you just pull the plant?
Yeah, well, I mean, the, the whole purpose is we're buying electricity when there's too much of it and putting it back in when you guys need more of it, so.
So you're making your money off of it.
Yeah, and, yeah, and it, yeah, it helps provide kind of a service for reliability overall.
Yeah, battery backup.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I fully support the idea of renewable energy and, and what we're trying to do and the program. I'm still a little concerned about the safety aspect and I, I do feel better having this good feedback from the fire department. I feel like the fire department's feedback talks more about, I guess, making sure that we're meeting all the required codes. So while we were talking, I did a Google search and the first three hits come back with a lithium battery storage facility in Arizona, smoldering, that's April of this Pacific Gas and Electric in California, battery storage facility, September. And that's a densely populated area. The landowner talked about chemical plant across the tracks. It just, it gives me pause.
Because it is a special permit.
It's, it's a great idea, it is the right spot for it. I don't want to go against the, you know, the group, the, I have safety concerns.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of points, because definitely you're right, obviously, Sigis, very important. So a couple of things, I guess, first, right, this is, as far as our view, this is a beginning of a, of a collaboration and process with the fire department to make sure that the project is done in the best way possible, right? So one, like, one thing that we didn't, haven't really mentioned specifically as a condition that Chief Quintana mentioned was to ensure that there's a sprinkler system with a fire department connection. was to ensure that there's a sprinkler system with a fire department connection added to this. So it doesn't affect the layout or anything, you know, as far as zoning goes, but there will be a, basically a dry pipe, um, connection for the fire department added, uh, at a location agreed upon between, uh, basically by the fire department, uh, which I think we honed in on in this area near the entrance. So things like that, um, I think we'll obviously continue to work with the fire department on. Um, I also wanted to point out that Chief Compania did the right thing by bringing in the state Department of Fire Services to make sure, kind of, they're obviously at the forefront across communities, they're dealing with these new projects. And, and she, Jen Voight reviewed this and, and agreed basically with those conditions. Um, or I should say her and Chief Compania came up with those conditions that you, that you guys have in front of you today.
Yep.
Um, and then lastly, I think if you look at a lot of those examples.
Yep.
Um, a lo, most if not all, obviously, you know, fire's not great, but when you look at how it actually evolves, um, the containment, the system, basically the, the mode of failure of these is most typically kind of shown to work, right? The, the containment of an individual unit not spreading to adjacent units or not, you know, consuming the entire facility and kinda that, that engineered, um, failure mode, if you will. Or if, if a cell fails, you know, maybe the unit catches fire, but the additional layers of security as far as each unit kinda being, uh, self-contained um, and burning out within that individual unit rather than consuming adjacent units. You guys see, uh, you know, those, those sites that have had issues, um, kinda.
They also request the heat sensors in there, correct?
Yes, yes, that's, that's part of, there's, there's many sensors kinda monitoring the heat voltage and all that, but that is part of it.
So you can't have, let's talk worst case for a minute. Let's say that all the engineered failures, uh, are exceeded. Let's say that instead of one unit going, all of them are up, going. Uh, let's say we got a shutdown of the sprinklers cause the water wasn't right, whatever, catastrophic. We're not creating, uh, something that's gonna melt into the ground and, and start problems everywhere else. I mean, this is not a nuclear meltdown, we know that, but, but it's also, it's lithium batteries, you know? I mean, they're bringing planes down, they're burning cars up. I mean, you get all these little things going that shouldn't be happening either. Catastrophic failure, the whole thing goes, what's the removal? I mean, what happens?
Um, well, I'll preface it by saying I'm not a fire engineer, but, but when you see these, uh, facilities, when they do fail, right? It's not, it's not an explosion, it's basically a, a continuous burn, so.
So like a rubber dump, a tire dump?
Yeah.
Similar.
Of just.
So, so the, basically the, the action at that point is to cordon off the area and let it burn, um, and ensure it doesn't spread. So really that, and with it being an unmanned facility, right, it's, it's, the risk of human, um, life is, is low. It's really that, it's really that coordinating off and just kinda letting it burn and making sure it doesn't spread.
And that wouldn't cause a problem with, uh, you know, let's say the smoke from the lithium batteries contaminating neighborhoods or?
In the case of Chandler, Arizona, evacuations and road closures. And, uh, crews using robots to open the doors and air out the facility of dangerous chemicals. And fire department recommended businesses within a quarter mile to evacuate.
So it's all, that's the all same way, I mean, you know, we don't know what knows.
Quarter mile, we stuck a pin in the map of where, how far a quarter mile is from this site?
No, well, uh, Saint Hans Church.
I'm not familiar with the size of, of that project.
Yeah, right.
That quarter mile sounds.
Geez, how old is that project? I just wonder if it's changed from safety perspective.
Cemetery that.
Why, is it April of this year?
Yeah, cemetery to Saint Hans, either way.
Church.
Yeah, the church, the school.
We could, if it tells us how big this site was.
Dollar Christina's.
Yeah, I would say that technology is evolving there. There are a lot of other projects that haven't had any issues. Um, and I think like with the one that you're looking at, at now, that has the, the units that Brandon's been mentioning, that's the, kind of the next level of them trying to contain it in smaller chunks. Cause what they used to be are, are much bigger, like the shipping containers hold batteries. And somebody could fit inside there. That caused issues, so they've, you know, they've changed the design there. Um, and similarly, that's what these units are, is to contain it in smaller chunks, so it doesn't get bigger, it would be smaller. Oh, no, 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 I, I believe it's good, it's good to have really good discussion on these things.
What's the mode to put out the fire? You can't, it's not water, right?
No, you can't cool water, you gotta, it's really dry.
Basically, you let it burn.
It is water.
They'll use water, but it's more to keep everything cool around it, yeah.
But the thing that I would say is, um, the twenty-four seven monitoring, the intention is that if there's something that looks like it could cause an issue, that they're shutting things down right away. So they have a lot of ability, like, I think that's the best defense is, is that early information that's monitored all the time so that they can, they can stop something if it.
So they have a lock that controls this, that's not you guys, that's the carrier?
It, whoever owns and operates this.
Has the lock that deals with it and it's always been a toll chain. Network lock center, so it's just like computers, you know?
Yeah, they'll have some either themselves or if they, um, hire somebody who specializes in operating and maintaining.
And they maintain twenty-four seven.
Uh huh, yeah, so they're always.
Work this file as well?
Yeah, it's in the operations and maintenance, I think, that program. But, um, yeah, so I think that's the best line of defenses, you know, they're learning from these different things, what caused that? They factor that into, these are the things that we're monitoring. I mean, the intention is that they would probably, we think construction in about twenty twenty-four, that's a few years ones that were put in, you know, back in several years ago. The technology really is evolving and getting better and.
So you went from bigger units to smaller, smaller floors? And that's what's happened since this incident?
Well, I'm pretty sure that's one of the container style ones, so it is different.
If it's already built, it's likely that, that'll.
It's the bigger.
Correct.
It's the bigger box. Now, I had the same feeling a few cell towers when all that was going on. Of course, you can't fight a telecom ban in seventy-six.
No.
Um, we tried.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Trying to give everybody as much opportunity as we can, but I'll ask one more time. Are there anyone have any questions or comments?
All right, I'm going to come to the hearing.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion made in second to close the hearing. Is there any further discussion? Here anyone, I'll call for the vote. All favor say aye?
Aye.
No, proceed. Motion carries to close the hearing. Yeah, yeah, we get that in the condition. Okay, calm, uh, do we have to close? The first one's to close the public meeting.
Yes.
For site plan.
And the second one, you need to, to close the public hearing.
So move.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries. Okay, regular meeting, call to order.
Patrick Perlow.
Here.
Paul Weiser. Tom Chacony. Carol Maturioso, excused. Tom Hergen, excused. Jason Parry.
Here.
Dean Valier.
Here.
Joan Siza.
Here. Minutes of previous meeting, October seventeenth.
Arrow, as usual, I didn't notice anything, uh, it's just. Really, make a motion in second.
Motion made in second to approve the minutes of the October seventeenth meeting. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here now, I'll call for the vote. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries. Do they have any new plans? No new plans. Full business. Site plan application for two five nine two seven three Lancaster Street. Map four eight four fossils ten dash eleven battery and energy storage system. Okay, on this I have a number of conditions. First one is a condition on the stormwater that would be done, uh, prior to final permit and in conjunction with the TPW. The second one would be from the fire, uh, department. Uh, the condition on, on hazardous, uh, yeah, a draft of a hazard analysis draft of, of, uh.
Well, you can also see all the criteria laid out.
Well, we could do that.
And the mode and some.
All the criteria set up by the fire, fire department.
Fire department, department of fire services.
Well, fire department conditions, I guess, yeah. Okay, was the hazardous analysis on that? Yes, it was, okay. Okay, um, third would be a, a plan for decommissioning and a bonding plan to be established. The bond to be established prior to commissioning.
You gotta be more specific on that.
Yeah, you gotta.
Prior to construction, probably.
Yeah, uh, prior to construction.
Well, the bond to this, I mean, if you're doing it with the leasing, they're also, right, there should be something that comes to us as well, just when you see.
Yeah, this, this would have to come, well, you can make it a conjunction of the plan of law, okay, uh, to the plan of law.
Yep.
You gotta be precise.
Do you want it prior to the shins of a building permit? Do you want it prior to?
Prior to the building permit.
Okay.
That makes sense.
But you were talking about real specifics, uh, a US bank a certain amount.
Right, you're gonna cash out the loans.
You gotta, you gotta put all that.
Yeah, that's, but that, see, we don't have that detail now.
Do they need to come back to the board at that point?
Yeah, it was, and, and that, that would be part of the condition. They would, they would come back to the board with a, with a plan for the decommissioning and a bond. Prior to building permit.
I recall that, that was part of the coming together with a plan collective.
Right, right.
Very good, very good.
Okay, uh, anyone have anything else that they wanna add? Safety issues, uh, uh, you know, they might come up and say, I, I see these things are getting better and better. I, uh, like I said, there is a chemical plant there, but really, there's enough with the, with the fence. Uh, somewhat every time, there's enough space that the fire equipment can get around, there's a whole road. And, and a couple of the conditions, um, so.
I must be the only guy to go against it, if, if.
Okay.
No, no, that was a great, yeah.
If all the folks do good about it, then.
That was great, that was good.
So, so I mean, I.
We've done that.
And I think, I think we have to go with, you know, and.
And it's a special permit too, you know?
And I'm leaning on, and I'm leaning on the fire department and they're.
Need six tonight.
Oh, well, then you can't go against it.
Two, four, six, nine, six, and it's gonna charm the fever.
Special permit is set.
Always continuing.
Well, we'll see where we get there. Um, so do they have any other conditions that we want to? Here now, we need five.
Well, we can still discuss it for a moment amongst us.
Yeah, we can discuss it, we just can't take more information.
I mean, I certainly feel the same concerns you do in regards to that, you know, and, and looking at some of the kind of failure situations. Yeah. It does seem to be something that doesn't, that doesn't explode, right? It's not spreading out generally because it's not putting it like right next to other structures, right? So, yeah, while I don't particularly care for the thought of noxious poisonous toxins going into the atmosphere from a, a fire situation, you know, I don't know, I mean.
And my, I see that, we see that all, all, all the time. We've had chemical plants here in Lemos, so.
Sure.
All our lives, okay? And any one of those could have gone up with all kinds of noxious hazards. We have, uh, we've had some, um.
Used to wake up in some of those neighborhoods, same neighborhood you're building, that's why there's a lot of sensitivity there. Some of those neighborhoods, uh, would wake up in the morning in the middle of summer, look like it snowed up, you know, from, from the waste or from the particulate coming out of the stacks on the chemical factories.
Yeah.
So, John, one more quick thing.
Go ahead.
We've already committed to some of these projects in regards to solar and other things. And I know for a fact that part of the major issue right now is capturing the energy to actually be used. What the hell are we doing if we're not gonna have somewhere to store the energy?
Yeah.
Okay, I had a lot of thoughts about the entire thing, but it seems senseless not to have somewhere to store the energy if we're gonna commit to putting these different kinds of things.
I have a friend of mine right now, he's, he's got a solar panel, he's got a nine hundred dollar credit, probably more than I last time I talked to him. Cause the power company wouldn't take his, they'd give him a credit, but he, he's covering his house, but he's not feeding anything into the grid.
There could never be a problem. It could be, it could be flawless and there's nothing that will be risky.
Uh, we don't, and we could have, you know.
Put a gas station there and somebody could hit the pumps and blow it up before the chemicals sprays or you have the traffic. And one of the things that Michael said that, that keyed on me is, you know, outside of the safety concerns, I have the same concerns as you, you know? I'm, I'm like this with this because I'm not sure of the technology either. But like Patrick said, you know, I, you know, it's, what's moving us forward. Um, but you, if you put traffic in that area, it could be really bad. And one of the nice things is there's nobody in there, so somebody come to maintenance. So you don't have an addition of a nightmare on that corner. You could put a gas station on that corner, be commercial and you got people coming and going all day and, and crutches on the whole.
Everything and then clock this that empty forever, they're looking to do something productive with it.
And I believe that he's supposed to do something right with it too, you know, something that's not gonna, uh, I, I've seen it, it's work, you know?
All right, let's move.
You know?
Yep.
Okay, I'm, I'm done.
Okay, I wanna give everybody a chance, have you done, has anybody had any other questions? Okay, those are the conditions I had. Are there any other conditions that?
You should add all department head comments.
Yeah, all the, all the comments, yes.
Yeah.
And it is in conjunction with DFS, not just the lowest of fire department, cause that's how it's laid out in, in the documents.
Okay.
It says lowest fire department approval will follow inside approval condition deployment solutions agreed upon by LFD, DFS, and ULEAF. So.
And we, I think we've done the, yeah, there's concerns, but I think we've done the right steps to, uh, to be as safe as we can today. Okay, so those are, that's, those are the conditions I have. Are there any others, okay? It's my, a motion is in order to approve this site application with, uh, two five nine two seven three Lancaster Street. Map of four eight four fossils ten dash eleven battery energy storage system with conditions as previously mentioned. Okay, I'll call for a roll call.
Just to clarify though.
A motion is on, yeah.
To clarify for department head comments, do you want me to quickly go over those?
Okay.
Um, we have, I.
Not, not since the last time, right?
There's nothing new, but I just wanna make sure I've got them in the decision. Board of Health had sound levels must be minimal, not interfere with neighbors, sound walls should help with this. Lining glare should not be bothersome to budding neighbors. Any hazardous waste that is generated must be disposed of in accordance with state federal laws. Conservation has landscaping projected to reduce noise. View of facility with native plantings, well done, so we don't need anything.
It really is not.
Conservation.
I think we got through all of those at the prior meeting.
We did.
Let me read it for the.
DPW Director said he needed more information. Uh, D pole test bid witnessed by the Department of Public Works is required at this infiltration basin location. Please call the Department of Public Works to coordinate this D pole test. Um, assessor approved, stalling approved. And then the, um, police department had joint technical review meeting, some form of crash mitigation system should be installed, ball or garbage or some other barrier to minimize the chance that batteries are struck by non-control vehicle during interactions. And I don't see anything rehearsed in the plan, but that was already addressed, so that's, that's no longer outstanding.
Yeah, the bullets stick here there.
It'd be nice to superpose those on mast and just for people to, you know, how you have the rendition showing the finished look with the fence. It'd really be a good thing to see what those are gonna be and, uh, you know, to see if you wanna paint it bright yellow or you wanna paint it the, the black to black, you know, I don't know. I don't know what they do in other places, but I think I will put that on the mission. And put, is it on the map, is it on the plan?
It was on the.
All hands are on.
But not the visual simulation.
Right, yeah.
And for the record, before the vote, um, Dean and Pat weren't at the last meeting, but they signed affidavits, they reviewed the meeting, so they can vote.
Okay. So with those conditions and that, motion is in order.
Yep, so who?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
I have a motion made and seconded. I'm going to ask for a roll call on this.
Yeah.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Carver Torioso excused, Tom Kerrigan excused, Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Don Suzo.
Yes. Okay.
And now the same motion for the special permit.
And I have a message, same motion for the special permit.
Same conditions.
And with the same condition. I have a motion made and seconded, roll call, please.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Carver Torioso excused, Tom Kerrigan excused, Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Don Suzo.
Yes. Good luck, folks, I'm looking forward to seeing.
Well, make it, make it, you know, it's all new.
It's all new, I, my background's electrical, so I'm really interested.
Said to the place, like I said, do it right.
Yeah, this is, right, this is the beginning of the process and collaboration with the, with the town, with the city, so definitely. And we really appreciate, actually, I have one thing I wanted to say, the organization of the board and the engagement is really great, so we appreciate it, appreciate it.
You know, we tried, we tried to work with it.
The one thing I did forget to mention is they, they all go, the scattery cells and everything go through UL testing, so they all have to test to make sure they have the safety features, and that was the other thing the fire department had brought up, was that they were happy that we're only getting batteries in those kinds of units from places that have that.
I, I could feel better seeing that, uh, the feedback from the fire department seemed pretty thorough.
Yeah, well, he, he brought in Mass Fire Services and she's a fire protection engineer, so she's done a good job.
He's the director.
Oh, yeah?
So, I know these people, I think you know what I'm concerned about, so I feel good.
So, we need to turn any corners, we're trying to do it right, so, thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it, happy holidays.
Happy, Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas, have a good night.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.
New business, we don't have any communications. We've had quite a few communications, uh, concerning colleague, um, on Tansio Road. Uh, we've got a quite a few letters in front of us, uh, back and forth. I'm not sure whether it's a misunderstanding, or, I don't know, I, I can't, I don't read people's minds. But when we, when they came to us originally, uh, they asked, uh, to do the buildings in a sequence, we said, fine. Uh, he had, but prior to the next building, you'd have to complete your parking lot. And we gave them a timeframe, uh, which was two years.
September 21st, 2022.
Okay, which is two years, and that time has expired. In looking at the site and going over there, uh, we found there are a couple of issues. Number one, the third building was in construction. Prior to our specific requirement, the parking lot be completed before any new buildings be built, okay? Second is that this, I went there today and I looked at different time. We given specific approval for 11 cars to be stored there, or parked, or whatever you want to call it. I think today's count was between cars and trailers.
Thirty-eight.
And, and different units, let's put it that way, mobile homes, uh, there was even a, uh, construction track, trailer in there. Uh, there's like 38 spots used. Fire exceeds the 11 that we approved, okay? We've had a lot of, a lot of kickback in the city this year, and the, to the point that there is an ordinance that's gone through, I think, already two readings to put a very stringent, uh, code on, on parked cars and parking lots or storage lots, or whatever you want to call them, in, in multiple parts of the city that have upwards of 150 cars on them, okay? So, this is just a combination of a number of different things that we have, and we're looking forward to it, built here tonight, uh, we've.
This is from the auto auction.
In, in today's, uh, that's, that's the lot, there's pictures of it there, in today's, uh, there's been a request that this, by, by the mayor or the mayor's office, that because the, there have been some different opinions, that it be submitted to the city solicitor. Okay, so at this point, it's been submitted to the city solicitor, we were hoping for something back before this meeting.
It's not.
It, it didn't happen, okay, and, but it's, it's quite a bit here involved, and there's probably going to be some more conversation with the city solicitor, so.
Take it up in January.
We'll take it up, we want to continue this until our next meeting.
January 23rd.
January 20th.
And it'll be in January.
Under communications on the agenda, right?
But at the same time, uh.
So, they've been stopped for a long time.
Well, is, that, that, that's, that's a, a legal point, okay? Per, per our site plan and our conditions of our site plan, you said the next building, they had to come back to us with the plan, and they had to do the parking lot. And they had to get the parking lot done by the, by September, well, none of those things happened, okay?
Whenever you're ready.
This is not a hearing.
I know.
Okay, and so, you know, I, I wanted, you know, continue it for, but I, I'm, I'm also asking that they not continue with the building.
May I just?
Go ahead.
For the record, Bill, any of the, I, I think we need to break this down into two separate issues. One is site plan approval granted by this board, plans issued by any engineering. And then the second issue is the vehicles to be stored on site. Chad came to me, um, late last week with a letter that was from October, I believe, from, from Elizabeth saying, you got to do something, you know, get 60 days to fix it out of the problems. And I said, well, why are you coming to me now, when we had this on October? And he said he didn't think that he needed to do anything. I said, okay, let, let's, let's find out what's wrong. So, I looked at the site plan, and I did bring, um, the letter that we did for the modification, and so on the site plan stuff, what we had asked for back in September of, um, 2020 was that he was building the first two buildings, and, and I put this plan up here, I was going to figure one, but I don't.
Yeah, we have a copy.
Yeah, that's the plan that we submitted, so the intention of that was that we were building building one and two, and at the time, he was concerned about whether he had enough money to finish the project. That was the middle of COVID and, and all that stuff was going on, and we asked for relief by doing grindings instead of paving.
That's right.
And it was just for that area in the red.
That's right.
Okay? What it turned out to be is that he was able to pave around those buildings, so he never needed, needed to pave anywhere else because of the fact that we only asked to do grinding in that area, when we built the next building, that, that building, before that building could be, before we pulled a building permit for that, those areas had to be paved, which they were already paved when we did the original construction. So, then he goes in for building three, and he's building it, and that's why we feel from a site plan perspective, he's still in compliance. So, from a site plan, it's, you're not going to pave the whole area until you put the individual buildings in. So, if he put the first two buildings in, we asked for grindings, and it turned out he had enough money to actually pave, as we paved it back in September of 2020, right? Now he's building building three, when he gets done that one, he'll have to pave around that building, he goes to build the next building, he'll have to pave around that building, and that's how the site plan stuff was going to work, and I think it still works that way. So, in my email to Elizabeth on Friday or Thursday last week.
Friday at four.
I basically said that I think of site plan, we're all, we're all set because it's, it's progression, every building we build, we've got to pave around it before we, before we use it, okay, which I think makes sense. We can't go and pave the whole lot because that would be a waste of the construction money that we would use each building. When we do the, the three trade shop areas, we would finish that parking lot by, by that area and build and pave that area too, so everything basically is done in sequences. So, I, but I did tell Chad, I said, as far as the storage of vehicles on there, that's, that's not me, that's, that's the building inspector, and I said, you better go with the building inspector and find out what he's going to say about that, and then you better go deal with the planning board on that. And it turns out, came back about a day later with a letter from the building inspector saying that everything's fine. So, I'm out.
It's not your part.
Right.
I see those pictures again, are those unregistered vehicles?
There are, yes.
You know, you're saying, so from a site plan perspective, from getting site plan approved, I think the plan was standard, as we build these buildings, we're going to pave. What he does on the land, um, if the building, I told him that the building inspector needs to know if it's okay or not okay, if he tells him it's not okay, then we got to go get, swear to permit we need, well, he told me it was okay, so here we are.
Civilian inspector said a little catch.
I, I don't know that. Because the, the 11 parking spaces, the 11 parking spaces on, on the plan are associated with the site plan, so as we build these buildings, if we had need to add a parking space here and there, build the three trade buildings, we build the seven parking spots over there, as we build things out, we add parking for, for the use on the site plan.
But those are you, those should be registered vehicles using the facilities, those spaces.
Right, right, so I'm, I'm, I'm with you, that, that the, you know, when you build the whole thing out, you have 11 parking spaces at the end of the day for the property.
That's right.
Hundred percent agree, okay? We're building the place out slowly because of, you know, decisions that he needs to make, and I get that, so the site plan aspect of it, I think is still intact, okay? Because as we build each building, we're paving it, we, we have to add a parking space, we paint it on the ground where it's going to be, we add it at that point in time and move on. I can't control what he's doing in the meantime.
No, right, no, he's using the land, he's using it.
But that's why I'm saying that, I, I think, but that's why I'm saying I think that there's two separate issues.
I don't disagree.
Whatever, whatever, uh, legal consequence back it says regarding the other issues, then if we get involved in having to deal with that, then fine, we'll get involved.
What I'd like to see him, you're talking to him, be okay, we've tried to work with him at the beginning, you know, right, and said allow him grindings. Uh, and, and allowing the thing, you have the boards, yeah, we're not trying to shut the guy down, believe me, okay?
The requirement for the grindings was, we felt that we may need to use that, the, the requirement by the board regarding the grindings was that within two years of those two buildings being done, and prior to the third building being built, the area around those buildings would need to be paved, not the whole parking.
No, that's right, no, those are, no, I agree.
From a site plan perspective, I think he's in compliance technically, but I, I, I can't, I wasn't expecting.
He's leasing this land to park vehicles, so too, you know, at the same time, he's leasing this land to park 38 unregistered vehicles. And I know that's not your gig, it's, it's what he's doing.
Okay, I want to work with him, and we come in and just say, this is the progression, I'm ready to start my next building, this is what I've done so far, and we can deal with that site plan, and I don't have a problem with them. We want to work with him, I, I want to see the project complete, okay? This thing, the sore thing is, is the, the, he's used that land, okay, as a number of other pla, for a separate business, okay? And because we have a site plan, it's sort of, you know, it's sort of conflict, okay?
And that's, and that's the usual way.
Okay, then that's where the conflict comes, because the, the site plan shows it built out completely, and then, okay, we can come up with a plan or a schedule, we don't have a problem with that. We look forward to him having a plan with a schedule, and we want to see it done, and I want to work with a guy with a new business or starting a bit, no problem. It's, it's the extra vehicles, okay, and then, then this is the way, we, we have, you know, I mean, and, and, that's, they'll say, you've got extra vehicles on there. You're only going to have 11 of them even when you complete it, okay? And right now, there's like, today's count was 38.
Right, so my understanding of, of the, um, of the, so the storage buildings in use require site plan approval, okay? My understanding is that the use of, however it was, were in the letter, contracted yard or storage of vehicles or whatever it was, is allowed by right. That's, now, that's a letter from the building, from the building.
No, it's not, it's not true.
And that's, and I think that's the way you're getting the legal advice, so, so I can't, I, I'm not going to step into that until you come back with that information, but I, I just, my point tonight was to make sure that we're all in the same page, that from a site plan perspective, he's still in compliance with, with the progression of the original plan, but right now, what he's doing, he's muddling it up with putting all this other stuff up there, I think that's kind of how it is right now, how that plays out, I think is, I, I don't think he, I think he should, you should allow him to continue with the building because, one, the building's on the way, and, and the more, the sooner he builds it out, the, the less cars he could have stores.
I would not have had a problem with him because he said, you know, because we, maybe we should have been a little clearer on our, our conditions, okay? That as he, that he would come before us, just on communications, okay, say, okay, I'm ready for my next building, this is what I'm doing, okay? And then we have no problem with that, okay?
So, I didn't, I didn't think that that was necessary.
Well, yeah.
We can do that from now on.
Yeah, from now on, I'm saying, this is, you know, hindsight's always 20/20, okay? But I think he's, he's burned himself, okay, with all the extra cars that he's got there, and I agree with you, that's a separate issue.
Right.
From building the buildings, okay?
Building inspector gives him a letter saying it's okay.
Is this the letter bill that says, well, best in rate, create the charter, self storage, contract the office, and rent an industrial zone by right?
Yeah.
Common uses of self storage, has to store vehicles both registered and sometimes unregistered.
Correct.
And contract, you had still require the site plan.
That's the key phrase, registered and sometimes unregistered.
Sometimes unregistered, we've got 38 unregistered vehicles, well, you know, Peter helped put the ordinance together, I'm surprised he said it's okay, so that isn't saying it's okay.
If I can interject, just to, just to play devil's advocate, and I'm not saying you're right, and I'm not saying that he's right, but, um, there's a self storage facility where I want to store my classic Mustang.
Right.
For the winter.
That's right.
And maybe I took it off the road, and now there's an unregistered vehicle on that property.
That would be in a unit, though.
Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, maybe it's an O B, or maybe I, maybe I'm storing my RV there.
Well, I'm just saying, RVs would be.
Took the plate off.
Right, right.
How many of those?
Right.
Best of 38.
Oh, we have.
Eleven.
No, we have, we have a new one.
Is for, is for parking.
Right.
Not storage.
I understand what you're saying. If you go out west, you see these places, storage places typically that store RVs, you know, but they're regulated and they're, they're.
We have a new one. Okay, and at the parking place, you worked on it, it's in a lot of, we did that, we did that by the.
Completely auto auction.
One of the things that we're concerned about is that we know there's one of these, in fact, that two have come over, where they're parking all these cars, it's, it's just grinding, no drainage counts have been done, and it's right next to the river, sleeping in.
For January, when we are going to discuss this, do we, do we need the property owner, do we need the building inspector?
Yeah, they're coming to talk to you.
Yeah, we invite the building inspector.
You know, I'd like to.
Shall we invite them to attend?
I'll invite them.
And we continue this to the January.
Now, those are our limits.
I think if we could put it on.
It's just communication.
Yeah.
But there's no reason.
But I need to see, and, and there's other, there's other stuff that, uh, is coming up, you know, it could be coming from the city, the mayor, the building inspector, whatever.
And let's get that.
Okay.
So, so if there was a misunderstanding on the coming back on each building, I think we've ever had to do that before in projects, but if you want to do that on this one, and then, I want to keep separate what, what.
Yeah, but he's doing wrong.
I'm, I want to keep separate what, what I was hired to do originally with the site plan approval, with the legal issue of whether he can store cars in his property, that's between you, the building inspector, the, and, and the city solicitor, and then I'll, I'll just come in and, and listen, and if there's a process that needs to be dealt with to have him, allow him to do that, if a letter from the building inspector allows him to do that, and we're done, then that's, then that's where we are, but if not, if something comes back and says, okay, no, now that, now that you're doing something different, then, then, um.
Limitations.
You know what I'm saying, I, I, what I don't want to do is I, I don't want to, I don't want to be in the middle of the, back.
No, 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 no. The, the ordinance, the ordinance of the city says 10 or more vehicles you need a site plan, in the story.
Well, it says 10 or more parking spaces.
Oh, parking spaces, yeah.
So, the, the storage, is that different from parking? I'm playing devil's advocate like this. I'm playing devil's advocate like this.
Well, the storage is.
I think that that's the inquiry that we need to get.
Yeah, well, I, it's probably the storage or parking as far as I'm concerned, I wanna say.
Again, in January, there's no reason to mitigate it now without the party. Let's be honest.
There's no way it takes.
Merry Christmas to all, to all.
Merry Christmas. Okay. Do we have any other directions?
Just real quick, direction report. In your packet, you probably noticed it, but I'm just reminding you, there's some inserts for your zoning ordinance. Please put them in your zoning ordinance. I updated the Alonik electronic version of it, it's gonna be posted on January 1st. So, the online version on January 1st is gonna have everything in it, but your printed books don't have that in it, so keep that up.
End of this, hold on. Say, well, truth.
No. Give that back a little bit. Are we good? Motion is in order.
I should do it, George.
Second.
All favor of Sam?
Aye.
Close, they don't. Merry Christmas, everybody.